Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum tonight. This is the regular school board meeting of August 13th, 2018. John, could you please do a quick review of the agenda?
Yes, so your agenda tonight is consent items around expenditures, personnel, long-term facilities, some agreements to use for services that we offer our families and kids. And then Amir Garbi will be busy with talk, leading the board through policies and the discussion the policy committee has had. Again, action tonight around superintendent goals, ties reorganization agreement, and additional policies. And then there's some other information posted just for your background. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the July six minutes or the July 16th work session and the July 16th regular meeting?
I'll move second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 16th work session and the July 16th regular meeting, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Hearing from members of the audience is next. Sarah, do we have anybody? All right, not tonight. We do have a recognition of staff. We received a letter writing in to recognize Steve Butner as an outstanding district employee and partner. The person who wrote the email said, "I recently needed to gather some technical feasibility data." Gave very little notice to Mr. Butner, and he got back to this person right away with all the information they needed and also suggested next steps. Steve is an excellent partner to parents and volunteers within the district. Thank you, Mr. Butner. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Reports? We have no reports tonight. And we have discussion. This is why Amir's name came up.
Yeah, it comes right there. Many of these are up for discussion. There's not a whole lot that's novel about them. It's just reviewing them either annually or their three-year time. That includes our advisory teams, legal status of the school board, school board officers, the sex nondiscrimination policies. Where there was an ongoing conversation was about policy 538 field trips and travel. And a couple of things are there. First of all, there are some clubs that are non-district sponsored, and when they go on trips, we still maintain liability for what happens there. There, for example, the rugby team, they went on a trip to Scotland. And so if something had gone quite south, the district is likely not in a legal position to absolve itself under the idea that it's not a district-sponsored trip, that it's an outside entity, because they wear our name and they advertise within our schools. And it's very much tied to the district. There are just some differences that put them in that category more conveniently. And so we are updating policy 538 student travel, this field trips and travel, to make sure that even those such groups are obligated to follow our district policies, the policies that district-sponsored groups would have to follow. And that includes a timeline for when they start communicating where they're going, how they start communicating with the district office. It also includes some of the vetting that needs to be done about places that they're going, so that we can stand behind these decisions as a district. Yeah, and we don't mean to discourage any travel. We don't mean to discourage some of the creativity and the decision-making that's been happening elsewhere. We just want to make sure that things are done in a way that's safe and vetted and known in the district that's responsible for them. All right, also, maybe even longer conversation on 538 field trips and travel. We talked about home stays during international trips. And the inherent difference between vetting a trip and where its child's staying and who they're staying with stateside and having to try to do that for some of the overseas trips people go on, that there are just very big differences with regard to what's possible for a district to know about a home, that adults in that home when a child's staying there. Whether it be the China trip that recently happened, or the annual trip to France that a lot of students go to, it's difficult to have the exact same expectations for vetting with some of those home stays. We did not reach consensus as a committee about what to do about that. We start with that first acknowledgement that it's different and it's difficult. Some of us felt that it should almost err on the side of not having home stays. Others felt that we could have some workarounds, perhaps a two-student rule, where two students are in any given home, not just one, sort of like the two-adult rule that other institutions have adopted when they have adults monitoring children, that there not be one adult with a child or a group of children. Those were things that came up for discussion. And we talked about some of the ongoing concerns that could be addressed, how much health info, health information would be communicated about a child with, to the hosting organizations. Is there more of an explicit liability release, or is our liability release that we already have signed sufficient? What are we doing about check-ins? Are we having students make contact physically, over the phone daily, with somebody from the district? Or it kind of depends on where we're going? What are we doing about alternatives to a home stay, especially for trips where the home stay isn't the only incredible opportunity tied to the trip? And this would be like the China trip. The home stay was an incredible part of it, but not the reason to go. Unlike the French trip, with some of these friendships where the home stay is what you're doing when you're leaving the country. And so, for example, with the China trip, should there be an option to opt out of the home stay portion of the trip and still opt into the trip? And maybe you would stay where the other adults are staying during the home stay portion. Maybe you're at a hotel, maybe you're at a dorm, dormitory, as it was in the case of the China trip. Some of the adults were already staying, not in a hotel, but elsewhere. But is there a place you can go? Maybe not even have the same amount of programming scheduled, but a place you can go and be safe and be monitored and be, you know, enjoying the hours before your peers regroup and the trip continues after the home stay. Those are all things that were discussed. I think I'll open it up at this point for just additional comment or thoughts from the board.
I know on teaching and learning, we've discussed this, the travel policy quite a bit as well. Some of the questions I had around some of the language changes, the competitive bids. I know that this hasn't always been done, particularly in trips that happen year after year, and they like a certain vendor. We, is this a rule that every year you will have to submit competitive bids, regardless if you've worked with a vendor before? Somebody answering?
So this says a competitive bid process will be considered. Doesn't say it's required.
Oh, I guess I took that as, I mean, I know it's considered, but I took it as something that we should be doing, because otherwise, we may not be giving the best price for our students.
Competitive bids are based on, go ahead.
Just standard district practice, and then Susan may have something additionally added, I'm not sure. So the district practice for contracted services is to do an RFP or a quote. Bid law is for $100,000 or above, so. And quotes are required for $25,000 and above. And so, but even for $25,000 and below, our practice is for services, just to make sure that we're getting the most service for the most economical price, our practice is to receive quotes. Now, depending on the type of service, we will do that. Sometimes we do it annually, usually not. Usually somewhere in the three to five-year range, depending on the type of service. Could go seven or eight, so.
Thank you.
Certainly, specific to student travel, we have worked over the past few years to garner quotes in every situation possible. There are some unique travel experiences that the requirements are such that there is no other company that would bid on the experience. So, for example, when our band travels, the band instrument requirements, the rental requirements, making large instruments available at the destination, not all companies can accommodate that. So we tend to return to a provider who has been able to meet our needs in the past few years. Outside of that, we do seek bids on experiences where we are having students travel internationally. I have multiple bids on each of those. And then the decision is made based around the richness of the itinerary, to what degree the experience is inclusive of all costs for the students. And the other piece that we look at are transitions in and out of the country, to make sure that our students, rather than them leaving at 5:00 in the morning and having four stops before they get to their final destination, it's about the efficiency of the experience as well, and making sure that that's a, excuse me, an efficient, an enjoyable flight for the student and the travel itinerary in general, so.
And domestically, are we getting bids as well?
So if it's a national experience, yes. If it's a local or regional experience, we have not been getting multiple bids for those.
Okay.
Okay.
And then my other question was around the fundraising and financial support. Will there be fundraising, am I reading this right, there'll be fundraising for all field trip, well, not field trips, but travel? So the Washington DC trip or trips like that, will there now be fundraising opportunities? Sorry?
Sorry. At the time, the coordinating teacher submits the initial application. They need to articulate a fundraising plan, as well as scholarship opportunities. And depending on the cost of the experience, those vary, from being incredibly comprehensive to being based on individual student need and having some supports in place for individual students who may have a need. So I think about an experience last year where we had students traveling for, with one of our co-curricular sports teams at the high school, and the cost was actually manageable, I think, given the scope of the experience. And it was, rather than doing major fundraising for the entire team, it was on an individual basis, and there were accommodations made for students who had a financial need.
That leaves a little room for discretion, though, on what is expensive to one family and not another. So, you know, I'm particularly asking about the DC trip, which is usually like a $1,700, $1,800 cost. And at least in the past, there were no fundraising opportunities. So I guess I'm wondering if we've addressed that in policy committee, because it's something I know that we've talked about in teaching and learning.
Yeah, I actually have the same feeling about the opportunity for students to be able to pay for their trips, and whether or not there is a mechanism in the district that can help with those types of fundraising opportunities. I know that certain booster clubs, you know, the band and the orchestra have those types of booster club clubs set up, but on some of these others, it's a concern, you don't want this to be, you don't want to make students feel left out, you want to make sure that the opportunity is for all. And I'm not, I'm not clear on whether or not we've really tackled that in this policy, if it's a requirement.
Well, the way it's written, opportunities must be provided for students to earn all or part of the necessary funds for travel-based learning.
Yeah.
And to me, it says that all these trips that are submitted now should have something tied to them that gives the kids the opportunity to earn money.
Right.
So I want to know if we're serious about this, and we're writing it this way, because it's new language, that we're going to adhere to it.
Right. And, you know, my concern is that I haven't spoken to the teachers that are taking, leading these trips. Like, I don't know what the effect will be if we enforce that. Will it be that we end up not having that trip? I mean, these are incredible opportunities, and I don't want them not to go forward. Likewise, the policy's been changed for international travel from six months advance notice to a year. There are trips that will not happen, because the teacher that is planning it cannot know and/or be able to make reservations a year in advance. So I'd like, this is the first reading of this, I'd like to be able to talk to some teachers and/or have their input on this, the teachers that are doing field trips, so that we know whether or not this is, we are cutting ourselves off from having field trips by instituting some of these policies.
Well, I think as a board, we need to make some decisions, though, on the fundraising, financial support side of it. And I think since, I mean, at least we've been talking about it for quite a while, wouldn't you agree, Lenny?
Yes.
And so I'd like to see us push a little bit harder for fundraising opportunities for kids, because the DC trip is a fabulous trip, but it is a huge expense, and there's been no, I mean, outside of some financial support for kids in need, there hasn't been an opportunity for kids. And then it also led me to read one of the sentences about the district partnerships, financial support, that funds for this support will come from private donations, fundraising, and fees. I'd like to understand what fees are, because is that kids paying fees for scholarships? I mean, where the, what are fees? The language is broad. It's letter D.
We're not looking at having these trips come from the district as opposed to students, and we're not looking at having these trips canceled or not happen because of our efforts to try to increase fundraising. And I want to clarify what you were saying, because what's in the international flight requirement is that 12 months out, the adults organizing the trip notify the district that they're doing so. They provide an intent to travel, and it's not that hotels are booked 12 months out. And to your point about fundraising, no one's trying to, and I think it's important, because it gets lost in this conversation sometimes, we're not trying to say trips can't happen without stellar fundraising, but we're trying to say, what about more fundraising? What about more common fundraising? Fundraising just is something that gets done earlier. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah. It's not that we're trying to discourage any of the travel. It's just putting this extra step on that, yes, there is opportunity. You don't have to participate. You don't have to participate with selling peaches if you don't want to, for the band boosters. It's an opportunity. And right now, we have field trips, and we're not providing the opportunity.
Right. But what I, and I think that that could be something that the district and/or, we could ask some, to work in collaboration with some, with maybe the Ed Fund or some other nonprofit that could help with those types of activities. But to put the burden on the teacher that if you are a science teacher and you want to take a trip to study something on an island, that they would also have to manage the fundraising, I think that that's just going to be too much of a burden. Those trips just won't happen. So I would encourage this, I think that it's important that we offer those opportunities, but I think we should be pursuing collaborative efforts, so that as a district, we can have a way to allow students to pay for those trips.
I think we're, I think we're in agreement. It's just where is it happening? And it is in, it is in policy. So I'm saying if this is in policy, then we are going to have to enforce it. And I agree with it. I still didn't get an answer to my question, though, about the funds for this, for support, and this is financial support, not fundraising. It lists fees. So private donations, fundraising events, fees. I just want to know what the fees are.
Well, depending, I think.
Or does that just mean full trip?
Okay, and I'm not sure exactly, I think that part of the fees are, there's, there are activities that have fees involved.
Student cost.
It's student cost.
Oh, it's just, okay. Then it was my misunderstanding of the way I was interpreting it. Thank you for clarifying that.
But I want to get back to the 12-month in advance issue. And I know that, that they may not need to have all of their arrangements made, but making that plan, for example, before the school year starts, or in the prior year, to say, "I'm going to definitely commit to a trip with my students this year," when you don't have your students yet. I'd like to know if that's going to cause teachers to not take trips.
I think it's been our practice for quite a while. Isn't that true, Susan?
I thought it used to be 18 months.
Actually, it was 18 months, notice of intent to travel that was required per policy. And we have changed it to 12 months, because we were finding that the 18 months was too far out for us to be able to create even a draft itinerary.
I'm trying to, yeah.
So the 12 months, actually, most of our, especially our international travel, but also our, anything that would be region, excuse me, national travel, our teachers are coordinating those easily, thinking about it two years in advance and beginning the initial phases of coordination 18 months in advance. It's having enough detail to bring it to the board for your consideration. That's where we moved it to 12 months.
So I think what I'm, I'd like to do is just see if, if the, that there could be some teacher input to the policy committee on this, before it's read to the board. So maybe I'd like to suggest that that's the next. I want to make sure that we're not discouraging teachers from offering these trips.
The recommendation around the timeline actually came from feedback from our teachers.
Right. And I'm, what I'm not saying is that I have spoken to some teachers already who have told me that it is a burden. And so I'm just, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
It, I guess for me, the most important thing is backing up from when the trip is to how our staff can properly vet whatever trip that these children are going on, which I assume that is going to vary depending on what the trip is going on. And so I'm all for teacher input, but if teachers say, "I can't figure this out until six months beforehand," if we can't do a proper vetting process, then that point's where we move. So I believe that's how these came, especially for international trips.
Correct.
There's a very long vetting process.
That is correct.
So in this policy, I think it, under Roman numeral four, it says the final trip itinerary should include, and then there's nothing there. So I'm assuming it has to include more than blank space.
You want to say the number and letter.
It was, oh, I, it's so hard to figure out. It's like 4C or something, 41? Yeah, go up. It's like, it's on page, I'll do it this way.
And on the Google Docs, I do see a long list of things. Let me look where it was on the board book.
This is page 137 of Board Book. So it looks like some things were taken from the appendix and put up into the policy. And I tried to follow this. One of the questions I really have is, so what are the substantive changes that were made to this policy? I mean, is there, like, can you give us like a little cheat sheet before the next meeting that says, "Here are the substantive changes," and moving to appendix to the policy isn't to me a substantive? But this is really a little hard to follow for me. And I suppose I could have printed it all out and...
You mean the blue underlined?
Well, just because it's moved from one to the other. So my, on Board Book and the one that I have, it's on page 137. It doesn't include the trip itinerary.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about. I see it in Board Book, and it's not on the Google Docs. We can take a look at that.
And I think it's in the appendix. There's really a long list in the appendix, but that was deleted, so I think that that was supposed to get moved up.
Can I ask one more question?
You can keep asking.
I can ask many questions. I had a question around the, I think this was well-added, about the district will make efforts to ensure all student travel is as inclusive as possible, that paragraph. It says, "The district will not be able to make accommodations that will fundamentally alter the nature of the travel experience or would result in an undue burden." And my question is twofold. One, who are we referring to when we say undue burden? Are we saying the children would, students would be an undue burden on the planners, the chaperones? And then my second part of this is, I would like to recommend that we come up with a better way to say something like that. I don't think we ever want our students to think that they're burdensome.
Yeah, I think that's, that's right. This is a paragraph we inserted after getting a draft of it from legal counsel as we were having this conversation. And that is not how we normally talk about things.
Okay. So we could just work on that.
I see.
That's my comment. Thank you.
So by the way, what Sarah said about the cost and the concerns the board had is correct. I think as we saw some of these trips or travel go to $3,500 and more, we started to say, "Okay, are we creating travel opportunities that are really not available for the student body as a whole? And do we need, how should we address that?" And I'm not sure what we've done in that regard. And probably, of course, as a board, we haven't really scheduled it for discussion.
Right. And I think the paragraph is necessary, because not every trip will be something that every student can participate on. And yet, how you, how you make that distinction, what you do to try to avoid that decision of it's just not going to work, and how you communicate that, all three of those are very important, and I know that we rose to the task on that one.
I think we've discussed fundraising for quite a while, so I was appreciative to see the fundraising in there. I just want it to actually be enforced.
This wasn't fundraising, this was more along disabilities line.
I'm sorry.
The legal insert about the district will make efforts to ensure that all student travel is as inclusive as possible. It's really that as possible, that's an acknowledgement that not every trip will be 100% accessible, regardless of any concern. But there's a lot we can do to meet the needs and to make accommodations and to foresee accommodations and rise to that challenge. And we do try to do that. And it's important that we acknowledge it's not going to be 100%. It's important that we do what we can to get there, and it's important that we communicate about this in a clear and considerate manner.
So if we could just get a cheat sheet that goes through for the next meeting, that would be great. Are there other questions, discussions, changes people want to make?
Do we think this is going to go to action in the next meeting?
I suspect it'll be scheduled for action, and we'll figure out at that time whether we decide not to, unless there's a recommendation to do otherwise.
Are you planning to discuss this at your next policy meeting again?
Absolutely. And I think as normal, we take the discussion comments, bring them back to the policy, and bring it back to the board the following month. And if it goes back to policy again, that's fine.
So is there a timeframe where this should be in place to impact, obviously not, this year's international, but, I mean, I would hate to kick it off a month and then miss a window.
Stick with the 18 when we don't have to.
Well, we can always, going from 18 to 12 makes it easier.
It's not there till we vote on it.
Susan brings all of those actually to, I know, teaching and learning, so you, the people are, the, they're following the rules better than they used to. Susan's worked really hard on this, actually. To try to get people to comply. And John, were you planning to do something with, with policy adherence, with staff at the beginning of this year?
Actually, I have a course that we've been working with, Stacey and Schoology, where the staff are directly, go directly to Schoology, which is a content management system that teachers use. So we're going to use that as a tool to account for people reading those policies. people reading those policies.
And that would include this policy?
Once it's approved, right.
Yeah, okay. So are you suggesting, Lenny, that this not be enforced if, say, it were approved in September immediately?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that if it comes up in the next meeting, we decide to postpone it a month, it doesn't create problems for scheduling field trips, or travel, sorry. That's all.
Susan, I can monitor it in the interim.
Okay. Any, any other questions on any of the policies? Amir, have you covered, I think, did you cover 634?
I didn't. It's, uh, that's kind of a standard update. We didn't have a substantial conversation on it either. It was among those that needed to go up for review.
I, oop, I actually have a question on that policy. And my question is, and I could have completely missed it in reading it, but we don't specifically talk about students' personal technological devices. When we talk about the district's right to monitor, read, or copy anything, we talk about the district's electronic technologies. And so my question is, does that need to be in policy?
I don't know that we have that right to monitor, read, and copy personal phones.
Okay. So that was my question. But we have at times asked to-
Don't have that.
Yes, we have.
Asked to do that.
But I think some of the cases-
That's my question.
-within school, and we still ask to look at their device.
Is if it's, if it's on a personal device and, because the vast majority of our students actually use home-owned devices, not district devices. So when those things go to school, we're not addressing anything about what are our rights as a school, district, to look at those technological devices. And maybe the answer is we can't do anything, but I think that needs to be clearly articulated.
So if, well, I'll see if I, if I heard your question right, and I'll repeat it. So the, the question is, is what rights do we have as a district to look at a pers-, a, a device not owned by the district? Is that, is that the question?
On our network or not on our network?
Regardless of it, if it's, if it's a personal device, whether it would be a staff member or a, or a student, there is law that is set up around that that provides privacy for the student or the staff member. With that said, everyone brings in their device and their device is registered, and the use of our network is filtered. And so the content traveling back and forth from that device in our network is monitored and filtered. And so you're, you're correct in to say, what is on that device, I, I, there's limitations of what the district can do to access that, but the content moving back and forth and on our network is something that we do monitor and that we do have rights to be able to inspect.
So that's something I think we need to clearly articulate in our technological use policy, because I, we don't reference that at all. And I think people would like to know that.
I'm still not quite following, because it's, if they're not on our network, if a student's using their data, we have great limitations in what we can demand to see. It's not our right to reserve to see it. If it comes up in the process of, of conversing with students about examples of what's appropriate or not, that's, that's different from using your authority and the rights you have as a public entity to monitor. So what you're reading about on B here is the district reserves its right to monitor if you're on our network. And others. It said, monitor, read, or copy any item on or using the district's electronic technologies, including its network. But if it's not our district technology, and it's not our district network, then that's not covered, and it's not going to be covered.
But those are two different things, because this, this clearly articulates, read or copy any item on or using the district's technologies, including its network.
If you're on neither of those, we can't insert something to cover that, because that's not under the umbrella of authority we have.
And the only thing you could see, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that a student was doing, so if it's a saved file to their personal computer, you wouldn't see that. But if they were working online and talking to a website using our online service or online, our wireless, you could see that.
That, that's correct, within reason. And so I think what this is referring to is, is that we provide students cloud-based server storage and things like that, our Google apps or our DynaApps for Education. Even though they're accessing that with their device, the information stored in our Google Apps ecosystem, we reserve the right to be able to access that information as well as-
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
-as that information. As to what level of visibility we have of the information, there's things encrypted and things like that. We make every reasonable effort to be able to, to have students register their devices, and then if need be, go back and monitor traffic and look at traffic from a specific MAC address, which would be the device.
And I think that's my only point, is that I think there's a little more information in detail that could go, most of this talks about guidelines using assets of the school district. And I think there's an additional layer to, okay, my kid brings in his own personal stuff, what are those regulations? And I, I don't clearly glean that from here. And I think the more we can clearly articulate that from a policy perspective, I just think the better off we are.
So you're saying this policy in layman's terms that kids and parents can understand?
Yeah.
If you have blah, blah, blah.
If you have, if you have a personal device, if you bring an iPhone in, if you, if you buy your kid a MacBook and they bring it into our school, this is the policy regarding that usage. Please know when you go on the Google Cloud or whatever, that's subject to us looking at that information.
So Steve, when a student or someone comes onto our network, I know that in some places I go and get a network, there's an agreement page that comes up that outlines what, you know, maybe it outlines what you, I never read it.
It, it is the acceptable, it's Policy 634, it's accepting the Policy 634 Acceptable Use Agreement. You press okay, and then at that point, you're, you're provided basically two choices. You register your device, in which case, then your device is, is on our ni-, is registered in such a way that filtering policies, subject to your age level or group, are, can be administered, so you can access some things. And then there's the guest level, which is akin to, I'm, I'm a parent, and I'm here watching a, a meet, for example, and I want my child to be able to do something. It's just a guest you're in. That's have, that's much more filtered and much more, it's still monitored, and I still see the MAC addresses on that. It's just more limitations of what website you can go to. To your point, Chairperson Erica, we, I think there is, Alberg, I think there's-
In seats.
Yeah. Stop promoting it.
Excuse me. At the, um, at the back of it, there is our Code of Ethics that we try to provide in layman's term, what are the expectations for our, our students on the use of technology and best practices. In addition to that, we do work, our media specialists and at the middle school, our 21st Century teachers do work on digital citizenship with our students, and we talk about data rights and data privacy. In addition to that, we do provide opportunities for parents to come to parenting in the digital age. And we do try to kind of provide plain English, I think, for these types of policies and what are some of the differences between that. If, we do do that right now, but we certainly could look at additional efforts if we, if the board thought so.
So Erica, I think that under this policy, there's a user notification, which is Roman numeral six. I suspect that what you're suggesting is that there is some clear language added under that required user notification that says in plain English, you know, that, that we can look at any document that you create using our system, even though it may be referenced in the, all of these Policy 406, Policy 515, protection and privacy, it may, Steve, be in that policy by cross-reference. Erica, I think, is just saying, can we make it more explicit and not make someone go to another policy to find it? That's all.
That's all. Yeah, that's all I'm saying. And I think you guys do a great job with all your education. It's more just in the specific policy, so we can go back to if we do end up having to review something. We can say, it's clearly articulated in our policy right here, which I don't think we can do that right now.
So Amir, if you can just take that back to policy and see, because I suspect that it's within that user notification, and maybe one of those cross-references can actually elevate some key language into it.
And there weren't any changes to this policy anyway, right?
Right. It's, I guess that's a matter of clarification in layman's terms, and so it may be there and out there places, and that'll meet the concern perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions? All right. We are on to action items. First action item is superintendent goals. Can I get a motion to approve the 2018-19 superintendent goals?
So, oh, so moved.
And these are, I think you made some minor changes since last time.
Yeah, I'll just go through those quickly from our last conversation in July. Goal number one, number five and six, objectives, I guess they're called, number five and six were added under goal number two. I think they're in italics also. Objective number three was added, and under goal number three, number six was added, towards the end of each one of those.
Any questions, discussion?
I do have.
All right. Well, while you're finding that, I'll note that one of the things that I think the board is going to look at is our goals for the year, to make sure that we haven't taken on too many or put them, put too many during the fall while we're working on the strategic plan. So to the extent that we change or modify the timing of our own goals, that might impact the superintendent's goals to the extent that they correspond to ours. Did I give you enough time to find it, Erica?
Yeah, I can.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the 2018-19 superintendent goals, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the Ties reorganization agreement set forth in Board Book?
So moved.
Steve, this is a follow-up?
Certainly. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Schultz, Board Chair, Lenny Wolin-Friedman, and other school board members. As previously stated, we are an owner of Ties, and Ties has served the district in the past as, as a partner, providing us technology, information resources, and instructional technology solutions. Due to the shifts in competition and access to other services and solutions, the viability of Ties just became unsustainable. And in January, member districts, including ourselves, voted to dissolve Ties. The action before you this evening is to ratify and approve the final agreements that transfer ownerships, ownership of Ties to Sourcewell, which is a National Joint Powers Association, and the Metro ExU. In doing so, it will limit future liabilities for Adina Public Schools to Ties. The agreements have been reviewed by the business office and our legal counsel, and at this time, we're recommending the approval of this action.
Any questions? So the ultimate cost to the district depends upon the sale of the building?
Um, yes, that is correct. Right now, we have, the last bit of business is the sale of the asset of the Ties building. And they tendered offers for the Ties building, I think, a week ago. We should be hearing updates on any proposals for that. The, we, we are anticipating that the offer to the building will be equal to or greater than the liabilities for the building, in which case, it'll be kind of an even wash. If there's any additional revenue from the sale of the building, it'll be pro, it'll be distributed to all the member districts at a prorata amount based on our enrollment. So there is a potential to, to receive some money if the offer for the Ties building is larger than the liabilities and the sale costs of it. But there is a minimum cap of, of any liabilities to that at $3 per student for maintenance, operational costs during the sale of the building.
So basically, in any scenario, the sale of the building and any additional funds are less than 10% of the total amount. So they're, they're not going to have a meaningful impact. But the total amount, Margot, do you happen to have that number relatively handy?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what's our, do we have a guesstimate on our out-of-pocket costs?
Right. So I thought at the last meeting, you had given a, a potential per pupil cost. And this sounds like that number is now going to be materially less than the number you gave us before.
No, material, I'm not there.
Uh, no. There is, there's two, there's two, um, there's two dissolution charges. One is the final closeout of any liabilities for member districts, of which we are one. And that one was around $19.50. And so that one's been taken care of.
Okay.
The last asset is the building, and owners are going to sell off that building asset. And any revenue garnered from that will be distributed to member districts. I believe, I don't know exactly how much the liability is on the building at this time, but we've been hearing that the, that we're taking, that in all likelihood, we're going to break even, is what we've been hearing from our, from Ties on this.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of approving, approving the Ties reorganization and agreement set forth in Board Book, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And again, a motion to approve the revised policies 208, 410, 413, 414, and 415.
So moved. Second.
All right. These are where we discussed them at the last meeting, so opened up for any additional board input.
Any questions?
Does this include the dress code policy?
No, that'll be going to the August 23 work session. A lot of, we have a few policies that are relevant to the start of the school year, so we park them there. And let's see if, remember the others where, see if I can, we'll check my notes here. Yeah, the, we talk about absences and tardies there, the dress code attendance. Yeah, I'll see if there's a, one.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor of approving revised policies 208, 410, 413, 414, and 415, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we're on for information. Are there, there are a number of information items at the end. Any comments that anybody wants to make on the inform-
Just for your information on-
All right. Any other updates? Committee reports. We have completed our agenda. Are there any objections to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.